Good evening. We will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Village of Westmont for April 11th, 2013, and if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Seneca.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory is absent. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malick.
Thank you. If you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under reports, it looks like we are not swearing in the police officer this evening. Are we not run?
Uh...
It's on the agenda.
Yes, I know. Tom?
Swearing in of Officer Kono. Will that be Monday?
Yes. Thank you. We've had one new officer graduate the suburban law enforcement academy, Officer Peter Kono, and he will be sworn in by Mayor Pro Tem Seneca on Monday night, as well as provided we have two officers who will be receiving two very prestigious awards from the department, Officer Bogart, sorry Detective Bogart, and Sergeant Schlicker from an incident occurred June of last year.
Thank you, and they'll both be on for Monday.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'll backtrack a little bit. We have no open forum, correct?
Okay.
Jenny Korkusimski.
I just want to congratulate the election winners, the mayor-to-be, Ron Gunther, trustee candidates Bruce Barker, James Addington, and Harold Berry III. I also want to tell all of the candidates that, for the most part, I was very proud of them. They were good about their signs. I wished I could say that much about some of the county.
She's the sign czar.
I was like nuts one day ripping county people's signs out of the parkways and all over. I was grazed. But, Tom, our candidates were very good about it. I only had to remove some on Election Day that were in the parkways. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Zemanek.
Nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Manager Cyril.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the finance ordinance tonight totals $1,045,943.58, and I wanted to mention that one of the proclamations that we have under the consent agenda, we were contacted today by the court-appointed special advocates of DuPage County, and they asked if we could pull that, and we're going to bring that back later, probably in June, I think.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Trustee items. Trustee Scott.
Just want to congratulate the candidates at one and look forward to working with them on the board for the next two years, and hopefully we'll all do a good job and help this community.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Trustee Nero.
Just one thing. April is National Code Enforcement Month in the state of Illinois, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our code officials for the work they do to improve the quality of life here in Westmont, and they are Vicky Senisak, Dorian Kraska, and Jim, our recent retiree, Jim Farley. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Nice. Trustee Klebeneau.
Hi. I just want to mention, because it did not make our little newspaper or little magazine that they send for it, May starts our electronic recycling the second Friday in May, and it was not on that little thing, so I want to make sure people are aware and they can start gathering all their electronics up, because we will start in May. We don't pay for it. So, because we don't pay for it, in fact, I sometimes skip in on...
Yeah, the county contracts for the service, and I know that, I think we got a note this week or late last week that they were renewing the contract with the provider, so we got confirmation that the program's going forward. We do provide labor, but they pay for the whole program. We also do get, this past year, we started to get some return on some of the material.
And some of the articles.
They pay us. It's small.
Which won't offset a couple of people who are working up there, but it's definitely worth it. And so, please stop putting your televisions out on the curb side, especially when it's not even garbage pickup day. I mean, I still see people doing that, putting it out there. So, save up your electronics that you don't need, and it'll start in May, and it'll go through the second Friday in December. So, we're good again to go. And congratulations to the candidates, and it'll be interesting to see the board sworn in. I'd like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Just congratulations to the candidates, and especially our mayor-to-be. I think he is a fine gentleman, and I think he will handle things in a very, very diplomatic way, and I do hope that the new board that sits here is able to compromise and come to agreements the way this board has over the last many years, because without compromise, you're not going to get anything done at all. So, just forge forward and keep going. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. And I too would like to congratulate our new trustees. It will be trustee Barker and trustee Addington and trustee Berry, and especially Ron Gunther, who has just been so in the mix of everything. Even though he was running unopposed, he made sure that, you know, people knew who he was and that he cared about the village. He came to our budget meeting. He's met with staff on a regular basis, so we have a mayor that will sit in this chair and run with it from day one. So, congratulations to him and to congratulate everyone. On the consent agenda, I just want to make note of, we have several proclamations. I know that the CASA will be delayed, but in addition, we'll have a National Library Week, Jazz Appreciation Month, National Public Service Recognition Week, National Volunteer Week, and Village Clerks Week. So, those will all be on the consent agenda for Monday. And at this time, is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda for Monday? Nope? Okay, great. We will move right into unfinished business. 15 South Cass, I'm sorry, new business. 15 South Cass, La Petite Suite, Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving A Development Permit Request From Diane. I can never say her last name.
Diane McInnes.
And, yes, that. To operate a bakery and cafe in the B1 Limited Business District. Diane.
Am I supposed to stand up?
Yes.
Didn't I do this once before?
Yes, just do the same thing.
We're back.
We're happy to have you back.
15 South Cass, we'd like, well, we're already in there. So, we'd like to go ahead and bring La Petite Suite back to Westmont.
Great. It will be nice to have you back. Any questions from the board?
Are you still going to be doing, as I understood, right, the same? The food, you'll have a light, little something for lunch or something?
We'll have the light breakfast quiche. We always do quiche because people love quiche. Our light breakfast, cakes, pastries, coffee, smoothies, no ice cream. No ice cream. And no, it won't be open at 6:00 in the morning, so fruit awakening, you're good.
It's all good.
And a lot of gluten-free. We're rolling out the whole line of gluten-free products at the Gluten-Free Expo next weekend, so...
Great. Will you...
Be open tonight? No.
You'll have the same hours as before?
Yes. Probably either 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning until, open to the public till 6:00 at night unless people need to pick something up, and then we would be there whenever. I'll be there.
24/7.
24/7, like I've been for the last six years, so...
How does this compare for your kitchen area? Do you have enough...
Same size.
Okay.
If you've not been in the back of the space, the kitchen area, and I didn't realize that either, that it goes way back.
I thought I saw that on the blueprints in the drawing, but it was...
It's big. The kitchen space is the same size. We now just have a teeny little front, which is...
Well, a lot of your stuff was takeout anyway, right?
Our stuff? Some is takeout. Yeah, most of the cakes, the cakes obviously are pickups. We will not be doing the large showers that we were doing every Sunday before we closed because I need a day off sometimes.
Good for you. Good for you.
Well, I suppose you're entitled.
Great.
I don't know. One day every three months? It's all good.
When is your opening date?
No.
Okay.
No. The fire department, the inspector's been in. He said everything pretty much looks good. We will need a final inspection. Health department's already been in there. He's given his blessing. He will give me my health department permit on site, so when he comes for his final, he'll write me the permit. I need my business license, which I can get after this meeting, and I don't think there's...
Our official vote will be on Monday, so...
Yeah. I don't think there's any... Yeah. I'd be ready Monday or Tuesday.
Great. Any comments or questions from our guests, the audience?
Welcome back.
Welcome back. Have you?
Do I get to sit now? Can I sit? Okay.
Thank you. You'll be on for Monday.
You're saving it for me, I thought.
Okay. 135 Scott Court. Hutchins Lot Coverage Variation. Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving A Zoning Code Variance Request From Jennifer Hutchins To Allow Lot Coverage Greater Than 35% Maximum Allowed. Do we have a petitioner? Hi.
My name is Jennifer Hutchins. I am asking for a variance in order to have a patio in my backyard that I think exceeds the amount that's allowed, which is 35%. I had a patio put in last summer because of years of problems with the soil in our backyard and the condition of our yard. I hired a contractor who came in and did it. He obtained a permit which was not an appropriate permit for the patio, which we found out about in the late fall, when the village came back to look at the permit. So, when I found out that it wasn't correct and that we needed to work with the village to get a variance, the village engineer came and did an inspection and determined that we have a retention pond that, I guess, is adequate for the area, and, that's right. And so, when I was here and did the presentation to the Planning and Zoning Committee, they, I guess, took everything into consideration and recommended it, and now I'm here, I guess, asking for the board to approve it.
I think it was unanimous with planning and zoning. Does staff have any comments?
No. As Mrs. Hutchins noted, the detention pond was built with enough volume to, it's adequate for the additional lot coverage that was added to the previous paver, so...
Great. Great, thank you. Anything from the board?
It's already installed, though. I understand.
Thanks for doing an improvement.
Yes, thank you. I hear it's pretty. Looks nice. So, any comments from the audience? Great, thank you. You'll be on for Monday. 333 East Ogden Avenue, Standard Market Variance and Site and Landscaping Plan Approval Requests. Board to Consider Ordinances Approving The Following Requests From Standard Market At 333 East Ogden Avenue In The B2 General Business District. Number 1, Variance Request To Reduce The Required Front Yard Setback For An Existing Grocery Store For The Purpose Of Constructing A Building Addition For The Wine And Cheese Department. 2, Site And Landscaping Plan Approval For The Building Addition. And 3, Commercial Masonry Waiver Request. Hello, there.
Hi. I'm Philip Stewart, one of the owners of Standard Market. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'd like to thank the trustees and staff and Mayor Pro Tem for allowing us to appear on short notice, and just for the heck of it, I'd like to wish John Zemanek a happy birthday. I won't mention the age.
Oh, go ahead.
Should we say?
No, it's all right. So, Standard Market is in the privileged position of seeking to expand its wine and cheese department. It's been a successful facet of our business, and we're seeking a 288-square-foot addition to the north, which, as I'm sure you're aware, violates our current setback, and it's designed to primarily provide additional seating for current patrons, and of course, we hope that this would promulgate new business, but primarily it's intended to deal with the customer flow that we have currently in the department.
Questions?
Does he, did he get up any of that information to show the people at home what it looks like if they weren't watching last night? He's got the computer there.
Sure.
If it's possible. I think it was a great picture, and here we had black and white in our stuff.
Do you have the picture?
Yeah, I do. Can I, I don't know who this is. May I move this?
Oh. If you've got a picture, you can just put it right here.
It's on my laptop.
Okay.
Yeah. Apologies.
Whoops. Still plugged in. Good idea, Pat. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was fantastic when I saw the video.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Just a quick recap from the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, because this went very quickly. The Planning and Zoning Commission gave it a favorable recommendation last night. They're very pleased with the addition and the fact that the landscaping will be incorporated around it to closer to Ogden Avenue.
Thank you.
And while he's setting up, I'll make a comment since liquor will be served in this location. I don't know if this process has started, but he's got to come in for approval of a revised floor plan for this from the local liquor commissioner.
Okay.
But no new license or board approvals needed.
Just kind of a stamp of approval.
If you're okay with the floor plan. Yes. Said will that transfer automatically?
I think the sky needs to go.
There we go.
Oh, they're good.
There we go.
There you go.
Oh, that's... It just didn't do it justice when I saw it.
Very nice.
Yeah, so 75% of the expansion itself is already encompassed on the floor of the existing patio, so to a certain extent, we're enclosing a patio that already exists. And the storefront glass that you see present in that rendering is very similar to storefront glass that you'd see in multiple locations throughout the building, and the roof will appear much like the standing seam metal roof appears on the top of the market, so...
I agree.
And then we also, yesterday, shared a rendering of the interior, and as I had mentioned last night, the seating plan may not be exactly as depicted, but it will be similar to that.
Questions? From anyone?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
It looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you for being in Westmont.
The additional space, the heating and air conditioning doesn't play in order, does it?
It does to a certain extent. So, there are diffusers that are present on the northern perimeter of that wall, which will move into the space, and then we'll probably add circulatory fans to the roof to help aid in HVAC.
Okay.
So, is that a glass roof?
No. You know, the entire surround on three sides is glass. The roof is very similar to the roof you see on the market now.
Okay. So, you could put a ceiling fan up real easy.
That's correct.
Okay.
Very nice.
And is it going to be some kind of tempered, not tempered glass, but glass that'll help energy-efficient to keep the heat in and the...
Yeah, it's, yes, it's the exact same storefront glass that you'd find, for example, on the northern perimeter of our bakery, which faces Ogden Avenue.
Okay.
You'll also find that in front of our meat department, and indeed, on the storefront glass that is on the northern edge of the current wine department. It just moves it out by 12 feet.
Okay, just pulling it straight out.
Yeah.
It's going to really be nice.
It's classy like everything you do up here.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
Very good.
And I love that you had Stephanie Zard there.
Yeah.
She's like my hero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the public have a comment or a question? Okay, we can move on. Cruisin' Nights Fresh Market 2013. Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving The Following Requests From The Westmont Special Events Corporation For The 2013 Cruisin' Nights Fresh Market Events Held On Thursdays From June Through August. Number 1, Permission To Close Cass Avenue From Burlington To Irving Street To Accommodate Cruisin' Nights Fresh Market Street Fair Event From 2:00 To 9:30. Number 2, Restrict Parking On Cass Avenue From Irving Street To Norfolk. Street To Accommodate Classic Car Parking Only From 5:30 To 9:00 On Each Night Of The Event. Number 3, Restrict Parking In The Cass Avenue And Irving Street Parking Lot Next To Toons To Accommodate Classic Car Parking Only From 5:30 To 9:00 PM On Each Night Of The Event. Number 4, Permission To Close Irving Street From Cass Avenue To The Alley East Of Cass Avenue From 5:30 To 9:00 On Each Night Of The Event. Number 5, Permission To Close The Public Parking Lot Located At Burlington Avenue And Cass Avenue For Squad Car Night On June 20th And Fire Truck Night On July 25th, 2013 For Participating Vehicles From 3:30 To 9:30. Number 6, Issuance Of A License For Amplified Sound As Required By Section 38-52 Of The Village Code For Live Music And/or DJ During All Nights Of The Event From 6:00 To 9:15 PM.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us. Is there any possibility that we can talk about item D and E together in one presentation?
Sure. Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you read what E is?
Okay.
Yeah, let me just quickly go through that, because I didn't read enough before.
No.
Taste of Westmont 2013. Board to Consider An Ordinance Approving The Following Requests From The Westmont Special Events Corporation For The 2013 Taste of Westmont To Be Held On July 11th, 12th, 13th, And 14th, 2013. Number 1, Carnival/Amusement Fee Waiver. Number 2, Liquor License Fee Waiver For Two Locations. Number 3, Issuance Of A Sound Amplification Licenses And Live Entertainment Request For All Four Days Of The Event During Regular Event Hours. Number 4, Street Closures For All Four Days Of The Event Outlined In The Permit Request. Number 5, Temporary One Way Traffic Plan Outlined In The Permit Request. Number 6, Geographic Description And Related Issues As Shown On The Event Map. Number 7, Safety Cones Barriers At Alleys On Irving West Of Cass And Permission To Use Traffic Safety Devices To Ensure Safe Crossing Of Pedestrians From The Taste Of Westmont Event On Irving To The Methodist Parking Lot At The Corner Of Lincoln And Irving, and I think that's it. You have a lot to talk about.
Yeah. Good evening once again. We are Westmont Special Events. If you are not familiar with our mission statement is, our mission is to assist the community in the successful development, promotion, and execution of various special events. Events chosen by the WSCC are based on need for assistance, potential community interests, and the availability of the WSCC board to undertake the project according to available time and resources. The first part I'm going to talk about is just kind of a recap of 2012. We had some new events and also things that were added to our events as well. Taste of Westmont was pretty much the same, three days, lots of live music, food, crafts, vendors, bingo, petting zoo, a lot more. We had our Cruisin' Nights, our Squad Car And Fire Truck Night, which we are infamous for. We had live music. We had some new activities this year, which included RC car demos and also kids' fun with the library. In, you know, in coinciding with Cruisin' Nights, we also started our Fresh Market, which was our first year. We had about 15-plus vendors. We did a lot of publicity. However, we were challenged by bad weather this year, but we do believe there is a great potential, and we have some new ideas for this year. And then our other new event was the Rock and Roll Road Rally, which we had 15 destinations, nine teams, which some of you guys participated in.
Some of us won.
Had a great time, yes, and we are hoping to bring that back. One thing about the recap is that this year, we did a lot of feedback from the entirety, entire community, including surveys. We also had one-to-one meetings, including with the village board, downtown businesses, which kind of brought us to some of the decisions that we are going to be talking about tonight. For the Taste of Westmont this year, basically, it's going to be the same as last year. One new thing that we are bringing is we're going to improve the crafters' area. We're going to allow them to bring their own tents, basically to keep costs down for them, also for us, and also to increase our number of crafters, because that was one complaint that we got last year. And we are going to rearrange some of the carnival rides on Cass, which was suggested by some of the businesses and community. I'm going to turn it over to Linda now, and she's going to talk about the Fresh Market.
Thank you. Our Fresh Market went off pretty slow this last year. We had challenges by the weather, but in addition to that, we felt that the attendance wasn't as strong as it needed to be, but nevertheless, we're going to go ahead and go ahead at it again, and we know that you need to present it more than one year to keep consistency going. One of the things that we've decided to do this year, and we've put a lot of thought and effort into it, is we're going to, we approached the state of Illinois, and we're going along with the EBT program, which allows us to use SNAP cards for low-income families so that they can participate in actually buying from the vendors. What they do is they bring their SNAP card in. We take transfer funds out of that. We give them chips or some kind of monetary expense, and they go actually purchase their goods from it. So, we'll be appealing to a larger crowd. We'll be marketing this across the general area to those type of income families. Another thing that we've decided to do is do food demonstrations. We're aligning ourselves with several of the restaurants in the neighborhood and the library as well to do presentations and demonstrations with a bit of a sampling, so people can find out what it's like to use some of the product that you can get at the farmer's market. They can come in and find out what is easy to make, and something that children can make as well. So, we've got different categories that all these can fall into to help learn as they go along. So, those are the two big things for the Fresh Market this year, in addition to hopefully a lot of new vendors coming out for it.
Great. I love your ideas about the market itself. What I'm curious about, and you're right, it takes more than a year to get the thing going, and everybody thought the weather was so horrible last summer, Ginny, and I loved it because we happen to like 95 degrees, but I wondered if you were going to be looking at any other marketing, that's going to be a pun, I didn't mean it to be, marketing opportunities for the market or, you know, advertising. I know we tried to get the word out as much as we could. Just curious if we advertise at other markets that Westmont has one, you know, like are we at the Westmont, or at the Downers one with a sign saying, "Visit Westmont On Thursday", you know, so that, you know, because theirs is very heavily attended, and I think LaGrange might have one, so I was just curious about the marketing efforts for the market.
We, Illinois Fresh. We were actually approved to, there's, and maybe Larry, you can help me explain it a little better, but it's a campaign across Illinois. It's called Illinois Fresh, which we were approved to use their marketing materials. I don't know if you want to go into a little further, but that is, it was a big step. We have a huge banner up in Westmont Sutton Inn right now, and it's something that we're going to be incorporating into our marketing materials that hopefully will help us a little more, kind of as established market.
And that's a state-of-Illinois promotion in which they are trying to help markets like ours to give promotion. So, we are now in that line of promotion. So, any promotion that they do, we will be part of that. In terms of going to other communities to market at other things, I don't think we've discussed that, but that's a good idea, so it's definitely worth consideration. One of the things that we have been providing our emphasis towards is trying to create new special events within the event. And so, for instance, every single week, we plan to have special attractions, and so, like for instance, today I had a good conversation with the area Cub Scouts troop, and it looks like they're going to commit to doing a Pinewood Derby Night at one of the events, and then And then on another night, they're going to commit to doing a soapbox derby. And come next Tuesday, we'll hopefully have commitment on both of those. But we're hoping that by having that type of an event, which in and of itself will probably bring about 50 people to each of those, that that will have a built-in audience that pulls into the market.
That's nice. Very good idea.
And so we're doing that. We're also, we've had initial conversations with both the marker district and District 201 about trying to get some of the youth groups, their community bands and things of that nature. We've already have a commitment from two of the dance studios who will go down and sort of do presentation slash recitals. And so, once again, if you have 30 kids come down to dance, that possibly translates into another 50 adults who are there to watch the children perform.
Nice.
And so we're hoping that those types of special activities will have that built-in audience. The other thing that, and we did this last year, actually, we did a lot of publicity last year, just didn't pay off the way we had hoped. But we plan to go back into the schools again and get the publicity out to the schools before the end of the school year, so that, so that families are aware that we have these kids' activities every single week. And hopefully, that will bring the families down. But word of mouth and the banners, you know, we had.
Go ahead.
We actually had a ton of publicity. Some of it got a little bit of a late start. I shouldn't say that. That's not true at all. We were in the newspapers weeks prior to the event. And then we had banners up that coincided with the beginning of last year, and then within two weeks of the event, maybe it was three weeks, we had 100-yard signs all over the community.
Yeah, I remember seeing those.
And so, really, you couldn't drive through town without knowing that there was a fresh market.
I think the neighbor's magazine will be good, too.
Absolutely.
Because that's getting to so many people.
Well, we're also hoping with the SNAP program, we can, you know, market to, you know, more families as well and, you know, do a lot of promotion also. You know, with flyers, we're also going to translate our flyers this year into Spanish as well and maybe hit up some of the, you know, the local apartments and to market to those people as well.
Good.
The one thing that we haven't talked about specifically, which is, might be the biggest part of our conversation tonight, is this map, which is the new proposal for Cruisin' Nights fresh market. And we've been discussing this since last fall. And I would say it was definitely a community group conversation that drew us to this. And the idea is that we're going to close off Cass Avenue on Thursdays. And here in the green area is where the fresh market will be, so it'll be on the south part of the layout. Just north of that, we hope to have the focus be the kids' activities, and so that's where the library will put up their tent and do various kids' activities. The Knights, who have always been a great partner for WSCC in this event, will continue to be the mainstay area for live entertainment. Obviously, we can use their courtyard. But there's also conversation about what if it moved to the front of their building, kind of on the sidewalk? If the street's closed, go ahead and bring that music out to the street. That way, it's a little more public. The other thing that we should mention is with all the bands that we're contracting this year, we're telling them upfront that we're asking for an unplugged kind of, kind of atmosphere. It won't really be unplugged, but it'll be reduced volume. There was probably a couple of times last year where we had trouble controlling volume and got a couple of complaints, but we're well aware of that, and we definitely hope to address that thoroughly. And then, Classic Cars would then park, starting at Irving, down to approximately where the alley is between, just north of the Knights of Columbus there. And we will have our volunteers manning that gate, letting them in, escorting them directly to a parking spot in which we're thinking we'll create some diagonal parking to try to maximize the amount of cars that we get in there. Additionally, Cars would be there on East Irving, as well as the parking lot that's next to Toons. And so, that's the main concept for this. It has, like I said, this has been out there for a while, and we came before you, I think it might have been in January, just to introduce it publicly, to try to, once again, solicit that community feedback. As far as I know, WSCC only received one email, and it was from a resident who voiced their concern about rerouting traffic through neighborhoods, you know, on those Thursday nights. But that was the only complaint that we had heard, and then.
Yeah, I did have a call from a business, and with the business owner before the meeting. And, you know, the point that the owner made, and it's a point well taken, is that, you know, his clientele comes from all over. And while our local community residents will very quickly catch on to the fact that, oh, Thursday night Cass is closed, oh, can still park in the parking lot on the corner, can still go to the, you know, whatever. But when you have folks that are coming from Lombard or Elmhurst or Niles or, you know, someplace completely different, his concern was, you know, that will impact his business or could potentially impact his business negatively. So I assured him that I would pass along his concerns. I don't think he was involved in any of the early meetings. I don't think he's active in that.
Correct.
DWBA or whatever that organization is called.
Everyone should, everyone within the DWBA hopefully is aware of these plans. We have sent out emails several times, as well as stepped up our invitations to all of our meetings. And a couple of the businesses have taken us up on that. So Mr. Martin has come to several of our meetings, as well as sound memories. And then we attended one additional DWBA meeting to talk about the plan. And I would say overall, we have heard positive, positive feedback and hope that this is going to be a plan that takes off. But we're definitely interested in hearing everyone's thorough feedback, because truthfully, WSCC does not want to take something like this on if it's not going to have support. It needs to be, it needs to be a community effort. People need to embrace this and decide that, yes, as a group, we want this to be successful. And that's the only way it will be. If there's a, if there's challenges between us as the volunteers, putting in many hours to make it happen, and maybe a different group who maybe has a different opinion, then we're working against each other. It's going to be better if we're working together.
It seems to work in Claretton Hills, but it's a much smaller downtown, too, so.
Sure.
A survey of the downtown businesses, would you say the majority of them were in favor of it, then?
This was a proposal that evolved out of conversations. So I wouldn't say that the original survey that was sent out asked about this specifically.
So did the downtown businessmen know what's happening?
This?
Yes.
Everybody who has attended DWBA meetings should be fully aware of it. I've talked with Larry.
But that's not the question. The question is.
Does everybody know about it?
Does everybody know about it?
I'm not aware of that.
So this could be the first time any, that some of the downtown businessmen are hearing it. This is the first public part of it, that some of the downtown businessmen might be hearing of it. And unless they're listening to this tonight or somebody calls them, they don't know about it yet. That's all I'm trying to find out.
Not exactly, well, not exactly. I mean, we've had quite a bit of effort where we went door-to-door and talked to lots of people. We just haven't done it three times.
Okay.
And so, like, for instance, this exact map, I believe, we brought.
We had, we had this on our objective, didn't we?
In January, this map was presented here. And so, the public.
It's been out there for a while.
Yeah. And I think it got into the newspaper that time, too. And, but your, your real question is, does everybody know about it? Does everybody support it?
Well, if you've got a business owner that doesn't live in town, and doesn't read the local paper, and doesn't have cable channel to watch this, or.
Might not know about it.
May not know about what's going on, and then all of a sudden, we close it up, and they go, "How come I wasn't told?". And I guess that's the question. Have we even done a mailing or a email or something to them?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, then that's.
That has, I mean, emails have been sent out where everyone on our distribution list should be aware of this. And I've talked with Larry Forsberg several times, and he's mentioned that he has only heard positive feedback. But trustee Fleming, I'd ask you if it's all right, because I know that Laura, of course, has a business downtown. With those conversations, does, do you feel that the businesses are in tune with what the proposal is?
There is no way that I am going to speak for my wife.
Oh.
Not gonna, not gonna pull me into that one.
I maybe asked the wrong question.
No. Not gonna happen.
Laura, if you're watching, you need to come down here right now.
I maybe asked the wrong question.
Well, what about your own opinion, then?
How about your opinion?
What about your own opinion?
I mean, it's been talked about for quite a while, as far as it's closing the street down. The only concern that I think, you know, any of them had is the placement for some of the stuff, not only for the cruising nights, which, I mean, majority of them, you're going to have more of a captured audience. The biggest concern, I think there's still some misunderstanding, because there's still some that think that you're closing the lot there, and they're not aware that the only time you're going to close that lot is for squad car night. I have heard several of them say, "Well, here we go again. They're going to close the parking lot on us." And I tell them, "No, you're not going to close the parking lot on us. Parking lot's going to get closed, is up at the other end of the block."
Correct.
So, I mean, you know.
Well, today, one businessman's worried about is customers coming down.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there's some kind of signage we could say that the downtown businesses are still open and parking, maybe to give them some kind of a way to know that that lot is still open.
Yeah.
I don't know whether it's by arrows or down the street, you know, whatever it is, but at least to know, so when they get down to Cass Avenue in Irving and they go, "I can't, there's no place to park. I don't know where to go, and I don't even know if they're open. I'm going home.
So they know how to get, how to.
I'll go somewhere else.
Yeah, and we don't want that to happen.
That's the only thing, is we just don't want to have that if they've driven a distance to sit there and then get the turned-off feeling, is here I came to eat, I've brought people with me, or I'm eating, and then what happens at that point?
So if you're traveling northbound on Cass, possibly some signage could be put right at the corner of that parking lot, you know, a banner or something that says, "Be sure to patronize your businesses on Thursday night, and this parking lot is open to the public." Maybe something like that could capture the northbound traffic. From the southbound, it totally depends on ultimately where the detour rerouting will occur. But let's say if it was at Norfolk, is that a likely scenario? If it's at Norfolk, then we can place signage there, you know. But once again, put a banner there that says, "Cruisin' Night".
All businesses open.
All businesses open.
Could we use the police trailer, too, that's got that board on it?
The chief is nodding.
I just asked him, he said, "All right."
That's a good idea.
You know, because I, you see that, that sticks out, it's bright, it's.
At least they know when they get here, then, okay, they're here, they're open. It's not all closed off.
Better than just a banner, I think.
Yeah.
Sure.
And I talked with our trailer, we could put out there, I mean, for the week, announcing it, not just on the day of the event, but as we do with other street closures, this street will be closed one day for such and such a reason, giving the normal travelers heads up.
And I think the local businesses that have email addresses would be smart to send out a blast to their customers, letting them know.
That's a really good idea.
What's coming up.
Absolutely. Rather than thinking of it as an obstacle to get to your business, it hopefully is a draw, you know, come down and be part of the event. Shop at the fresh market, check out the classic cars, be part of the cooking demonstrations.
Yeah, I know that Downers doesn't close the street for their cruising nights, but it's so successful, you can't, you know, you can't get into a restaurant on a Friday night in Downers because of cruising nights, there's so many people there. Same in Lamont, same in Elmhurst. So, you know, it could really work to the benefit of our businesses.
And I think the reason that this is being looked at is because there's so much competition out there in the same night with other communities. We have to make ourselves different than the rest, just not the same car show that everybody else goes to.
Yeah.
Trying to step it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Trying to step it up. And so, I hesitate doing this now, because I put Lee on the spot a moment ago, and it didn't work, but.
I'll just do it again.
But Lee actually suggested this type of concept a couple of years ago, and I think it had support from the very beginning, that people liked, they were intrigued by the idea. And we did not pursue it right away, basically, because when we talked with staff about potential costs, if it was going to be cost prohibitive, then we didn't want to, you know, go down that path. But it's been an idea that's been discussed for a few years.
Long time.
And so hopefully, people have warmed up to it. And then, Emily, do you need to conclude with?
Don't we have?
Oh, you have more?
Yeah.
What?
We have more.
I'm sorry.
You have to talk a lot longer after I read all that.
I know.
Just kidding.
Just kidding. People can talk about, oh, you're.
Yeah, I've already said cruising.
Oh.
Do I have more to say?
Yeah.
I'll introduce Bob real quick. Bob is one of our new volunteers, and Bob Reed, and he's working with cruising nights this year. And with the questions that came out, I'm afraid maybe I answered some of the questions. But anyway, Bob.
No, 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 you did. I just wanted the board to know that I, the reason I got on to this is because I know a lot of people around town that have cars, and I know a lot of people that come to cruising nights. Their main complaint is that they don't have any place to go. There's no place to park, you know, we lost that commuter lot. And they all like to be there because they're all grouped together, they talk together, then they're right there by their cars. And I've talked to them about closing Cass Avenue, and they would really, you know, like that, and more cars will come if there's a place for them to park, you know, and where they can be together. And they're just, plus, right now, they're at Toons, they're inside of that Toons parking lot, and they're out of sight. And they're on Irving, and they're out of sight, you know, people can't see them. They want to be out in the open where people can see them and.
Show off.
Show.
Just out of curiosity, when things how the street is going to be closed, are you going to diagonal park those cars instead of like you would normally parallel park?
Oh, that's an interesting idea.
You could get more vehicles that way.
That is what we've talked about. And we'd have to walk them in, because there'll be pedestrians in there, of course, so.
Right.
So since we're going to have more, or hopefully have more cars on the street, if the street's closed, is there, you guys are the experts, but is there still that great a need to have the Toons lot? What I'm thinking is, could you have, if you didn't need the Toons lot, could you have signage there, additional business parking, so people coming from the south?
I think the answer is yes. You absolutely need that lot.
Oh, okay, that's, I trust you. It was just a thought.
Let me find that map again. But the reality is, is that this area here for the classic cars really won't provide for.
Not that big, I guess.
Yeah, it won't be.
Okay.
You know, it might be 30 cars tops, and we're hoping to have a minimum of 50 cars per night. If it's less than 50, then we have not reached our minimum goal. And so, the idea was that, once again, it's to try to congregate the group of car owners in clusters, because it's a social event for them. And so if they're all within a close proximity, and then the other thing also, now, that's for the car owners, but then also for the pedestrian and the families who come to the event, it's, once again, it's all together, it's all consecutive.
Yeah.
If the event continues to grow, part of this request is to use the parking on Cass between Irving and Norfolk, and then we grow northbound up to the Bank of America parking lot. If we grow to that, then that'll be wonderful. I mean, that is the goal. We feel that last year, when the fresh market was down and around the corner, that was just enough of a visual disconnect that it didn't keep the event together. This layout, everything's together. If you're at any end, you're going to see to the other end what's going on.
And I know there's some car owners that just don't want their car on the street. They want to be protected in an area, you know, they want people scratching them and touching them and, you know, which kind of makes me think about something else. If the street is closed, how will we, or what plan do you have to prevent bike riders, skateboarders in the street where they could potentially damage a car, hit a pedestrian? Has that been considered, or?
Not specifically, but once again, maybe some signage can assist with that, but more importantly, training to our volunteers. And I know EMA is very good with stuff like that. If we pow-wow ahead of time and say that, when people, even strollers, so we're trying to encourage families, but we're also going to encourage you not to try to get between two parked cars.
Yeah.
You know, because these, you know, these people have a lot of pride in their cars, put a lot of money in it, and they're fearful of any damage. So we want to definitely give them security and safety for their vehicles so that they will come back every week.
Well, you know, strollers, strollers are one of the things, but kid on rollerblades and skateboards and bicycles.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I mean, as it is now. You ask any of the people that are in a downtown business, how many times they almost get hit when they walk out on the sidewalk, somebody come charging down the sidewalk.
Right.
You're on skateboards or a bicycle.
So we'll have to.
As long as you must want to stick your hand out there and go, "Boo". I mean, even though it's plastered on the sidewalk, it's like, use some common sense.
Well, we won't do that. But.
You were a child once, remember?
I didn't do that.
What do you mean, once? He still is.
I'd have gotten whooped when I got home real good for that.
But I think we can train our volunteers to maybe approach those people and ask them to be careful.
Just kind of a thought to throw out there. I think you've pretty much covered everything that had to be discussed. The rest is mostly routine, correct?
For the most part, I think Emily has just a couple of.
Oh, okay.
I have a couple of closing.
I just didn't want to open it up to the public.
No, 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 no. It's okay. It's okay. We just, you know, once again, all of our community events require a lot of work, you know, to make everything happen, so we just wanted to give a special thank you to the village board, village staff, EMA, public agencies, area schools, and community organizations, and, you know, more so our sponsors, local business community, and of course, our volunteers. Some other things within this request, we are asking, you know, that all in-kind services provided by the village are continued, as they have been in the past years, which we really appreciate. And also, we just wanted to make a mention, if there is any opportunity to request any hotel motel tax funds, we feel that the WSCC and our related events would be a match for this, since we do draw thousands of people to Westmont every year, and we could place, you know, on our marketing materials to promote overnight stays. Final thing, we have our, next Thursday, April 18th, we have our open house at Westmont Center from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will be talking about our theme and also our entertainment lineup we will be discussing, unveiling that evening, so. And then now we can open up for questions.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board?
When is the open house again?
It's next Thursday, April 18th, Westmont Center from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We are looking for volunteers. We'll be talking about all of our events this summer, but more so unveiling the entertainment lineup.
Great.
For the taste.
Any questions from the board? Anyone from the public that would like to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more.
I'm sorry.
You had said about the competition of other car shows around town. As far as I know, that I've been aware of, Thursday nights, we have one and Elmhurst has one. And from what I understand from Elmhurst, they are no longer going to be going there.
They're not going to do it?
Well, they're going to be doing it, but the car drivers and stuffs, they're having hassle problems down there and.
Maybe they'll come to us.
I heard, I heard they're pulling out of there. But once these guys aren't comfortable, they're not going to come back.
As Larry said, there's a lot of money invested in those cars.
Absolutely.
Good.
Great. Comments? Anybody from the audience? Anybody from the public wishes to comment? Okay, all of this will be on for Monday.
All right.
Thank you very much.
31 North Cass Avenue, the sweet and savory spot. Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from Danielle Kirin, Corinne, Karen. Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I scribbled. I scribbled, sorry, my fault. Downtown Transit Oriented Development Districts. Board to hear a presentation from FAR Associates on the updated Transit Oriented Development TOD Plan, recommending the adoption of TOD districts. This sounds very familiar.
Thank you. This evening, we have Tony Manos and we have Leslie Ober, Ober, how was, say your name, please. Ober Holzer, sorry, from FAR Associates, and Tony's from RTA. They're here to give a presentation on the preliminary draft of the updated Downtown TOD Districts program. The board will recall back in 2011, we applied for and received a grant through the RTA to continue the work of the 2000 TOD update that FAR and Associates participated in through another grant that the RTA gave. So this evening, Leslie is going to walk us through the materials. There was a steering committee that met twice in 2012, and it comprised staff, residents, some of the business community, some of our elected officials. And that feedback was taken to create these development standards. One of the reasons for the delay in it coming before the Village Board is because, as you know, we've been very tied up and occupied with our comprehensive plan and the TIF studies. So the thought was that as we approved these other plans, this would come back before the board. We're trying to coordinate very closely between FAR and Associates and Halsey Levine, who's been doing the comprehensive plan work, so that the items are dovetailed and work really well together. So it would be my recommendation that if everything goes well and there is feedback, we could take that to the committee level to discuss further. So this is really more of a discussion this evening, and we can hash out any just details at the committee level and bring it forward for adoption at a later date. With that, I'll turn it over to Leslie.
Great.
Sorry, I butchered your name. Oh, no, happens all the time. Hello. What do I, what do I do to make it? I don't have to do anything to get it on the screens? Okay.
It's.
He's getting ready.
Oh, you know what? I don't think it's plugged in all the way.
Rescue me.
Oh, there. What, I don't know. What does you? Shannon? Does that random cord that's hanging have anything to do with anything?
No, because it worked for.
No.
No, that's sound.
Okay, thank you.
Pull it out and see if it just didn't make a good connection.
I can just, I can do it with the paper.
Like, for a second.
Might have hit that button to engage it, you know, it's like F5 or something. Function and then another button.
That's not doing it.
Spencer's got it.
Our apologies, we made a last minute equipment switch and we're having some time.
It's okay, here we go.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much. What I'm going to do tonight is just kind of walk you through a sort of an overview of the proposed code. But first, I'd like to sort of introduce myself. I am with FAR Associates. Let's see if I can get this to, get rid of that. I'm with FAR Associates. We're a Chicago-based urban design and planning firm. We also do architecture. I am the principal and the director of planning. I also serve on the Form-Based Codes Institute, which is a type of zoning code that I'm going to explain a little bit to you tonight. I'm on the Resource Council. I'm also involved in a lot about sustainability in terms of two specific metric, national metric organizations. One is the U.S. Green Building Council. I'm on their technical advisory committee in terms of smart growth, lead for neighborhood development, and ways to promote that and utilize it within communities. Also, on the STAR Community Index, which is an organization that is looking to help score communities for sustainability. So I say that because a lot of what we've incorporated into this code tonight really is a lot about sustainability as well, just a little aside. But in terms of walkability and promotion of your downtown for economic sustainability as well as green sustainability. So I just want to say that the starting point for this all is the TOD study that was done in 2000, as well as the comprehensive plan. Actually, the way that we wrote the draft was based on the TOD study because at the time, the comprehensive plan was not complete. But then, after the comprehensive plan came out, we sort of compared everything, and it worked out really well, that what Halsey Levine was recommending was also what the TOD study had recommended and what we thought was a good idea to incorporate into the code. So they are, as Shannon said, meshing very well together, and we can only make it better. So starting with the TOD, the comprehensive plan, which I'm assuming that you guys are somewhat familiar with the TOD study and what it had originally proposed, in terms of really making the development compact right here, right around the transit station, and then allowing for different types of things to happen kind of on the edges. What has happened in the, it's not really any way for me to point, but what happened in the Halsey Levine plan, you can see I've sort of glommed together two of the sub-areas in the comprehensive plan. I'm assuming you guys on the heels of it are very familiar with this. So the downtown plant, the downtown sub-area is shown at the bottom, and then the Cass Avenue Naperville is shown at the top. And you can see that the red at the bottom that goes up to Norfolk is separated from what's happening between Norfolk and Cass Avenue. And that is something that we noticed that's different from your existing zoning code and was also proposed in the 2000 study to create separate zoning districts for those two areas, in addition to Burlington, the two different sides of Burlington, and then the area south of the tracks on Cass Avenue. Also, within the comprehensive plan, a lot of the language is consistent with the study, is consistent with what we had incorporated into the draft code, incorporating ground floor transparency to maintain visual interest and generate foot traffic in the downtown, also to maintain the street wall, and noting that it is critical for your downtown area, even though your current zoning code does not require that. And then also incorporating building design standards. I'll talk about this in just a second, but right now, what you have is this sort of special level of approval in addition to your site plan approval for the downtown specifically. And what we want to do is help to kind of shore that up with what you are recommending, looking at the building design and kind of incorporating that more into the zoning code. So your existing zoning map, which you can't really see here, but is a B1 district that extends all the way from Naperville Road all the way down to, I think it's Dallas Street, with one district. You've got a couple of PDs that were approved within that. And then you have R5, essentially the two arms that are extending along Quincy and Burlington along the tracks. So I'm going to kind of go over what's in your existing code and talk about how it's different, or how we've treated it differently in the proposed code. So right now, your existing zoning is a B1 district, as I said, extending the whole way through. This is the development permit that you've had one of tonight. And really, the language there says, probably kind of hard to read up there, says protect and enhance the aesthetics and safety of the B1 district through the use, construction, or alteration of property, as well as aesthetics such that the current architecture is supported and enhanced. So that type of language is fairly vague. And I'm assuming that you might have some difficulties in terms of implementing that. And so what we want to do is kind of give you more language to help shore that up and make sure that all of the community that comes in for development proposals understands exactly what it is that you are looking to happen in this location. Your existing zoning also for B1 has a very long list of uses. It's about six pages long. And it has actually a very good mix of uses for the whole B1 district. However, it doesn't really coordinate what you might want to occur down at the intersection near the transit station. You might want to treat that a little bit differently, require retail and restaurants in that location, and maybe have the offices locate further out. And what you've got right now is a kind of large mass of a variety of uses that are permitted along the whole length of Cass Avenue within the downtown. So we want to allow that to separate. You also have permitted dwelling units in the upper stories, which is great. A lot of the downtown codes right now don't have that, so we want to maintain that and bring that forward. It's just that it's kind of in an aside, in a separate location, and it looks like it was maybe tacked on afterwards, which is great that you did it. But we want to try to incorporate it into the code as fully as possible. And then looking at what you allow in the B1 district in terms of form, you have an FAR, maximum floor area ratio of .8 that is permitted. And typically, we recommend not doing floor area ratio. I'll show you an image of that in just a second. But specifically, if you look at the Richmond Station PUD that was approved, it essentially has an FAR of about 2.0. So it's over two times the FAR that is permitted within the B1 district right now. And then additionally, the height of it is about, I'm estimating it's about 45 feet. So it's larger than what your maximum height for buildings are in the B1 district. So that's a good example of the type of development that you might see happen again in, you know, once our economic times kind of pick up. But we want to make sure that we're allowing for that type of thing to happen a little bit more easily in the future, and that your zoning code reflects the vision that you're looking for. So looking at what FAR can give to you, this is three different FARs, .5, 1.0, and 1.5. And you can see that there's a variety of things that can happen with FAR. You can, with a .5, you can cover half of your site completely, or you can do a two-story building on a quarter of your site. So FAR is not a good example of showing what the particular character is that you're looking for. It's a kind of a vague requirement. And so typically, with a form-based code, we try to stay away from those kinds of regulations that don't really explain what it is you're looking for. If you're looking for a maximum height of two stories, but you want your building to extend the whole way, that really might be a 1.0, or it might be less than that. So, or it might even end up being more than that. So what you want to do is just essentially state how much of the property line you want covered and how tall you want the building to be within that area. And the community's visioning has been pretty clear about what that expectation is. And so also with Richmond Station, the setbacks are five feet, the required setbacks. However, if you were to look at your zoning code, you have this little, I'm sure that you all are aware, you have this little, who can't read it, footnote that states that for Cass Avenue, you should have 50 feet from the center line back, or even actually, yeah, it's 50 feet. And so I just want to show you that south of the tracks, kind of hard to see, but this is Cass Avenue just south of the tracks. All of those buildings that are built back with large front yards, many of them look like they may have been houses at one point in time, those are 50, 60, 65 feet back. But if you look at the area north, where everybody, you know, sort of visualizes this is downtown Westmont, those are actually more like 30 feet from the center line or built up to the right-of-way. And so what we want to do is make sure that the area that everybody cares for, that character that everybody is really valuing, is really what your zoning code is asking for. And then you don't have to give variances, or, you know, have people come in for PUDs or some kind of a special permit, just to do what it is that you really want them to do. So one of the regulatory aspects that we use with a form-based code is to define what's called a build-to-zone instead of a building setback. And what you see on the right-hand side is a setback line. It's the dashed line that says that the building must be located somewhere beyond this line. Whereas a build-to-zone, the yellow line that you see on the left, says that the building has to be located within this area. And what you really have up and down Cass Avenue in the areas that have that great character is build-to-zones. You've got a street wall, just like Halsey Levine was saying, is critical in this area. And so what you want is any new infill that comes in to build to the existing street wall or some area within it. You do have some really interesting buildings. You've got like the optometrist building that has a kind of, you know, mid-century angles to it. And so you want to allow some flexibility. You want to, don't want to create a zero build-to-line. So we typically create a zone that's, you know, zero to five feet, or zero to 10 feet, or something like that. And so just to kind of briefly look at the R5, you have approved this Quincy Street Station with changes in the setbacks, changes in the height, changes in the coverage, I believe, as well. I just want to point out that the existing R5 has one thing that's sort of interesting. It has this sort of minimum per area per dwelling unit, with the intent of getting more green space, more open space kind of around those buildings. But if you were to apply that to the Quincy Street Station development at 4,500 square feet per unit, and that's just for townhouses, you would only be able to do 10 of those three-bedroom units. And what was proposed there was 16. And further, there's a kind of footnote to that, that if it's covered with driveway, then you need to provide that additional area. And so almost all of the sort of open space on Quincy Street Station, with the exception of the front patios, is the driveway that extends to the back and puts those garage doors on the back. And so they would have had to apply that additional open space to the area. So in terms of creating that kind of feel that the Quincy Street Station gave, your zoning code doesn't permit that. So it would have had to come in for a PUD or a whole series of variances under your existing code, which it did. So again, what we wanted to do when we were drafting the code was to make everything a little bit easier to develop within the downtown. Developers, Tony can attest to this, being a previous developer, that you want to make the code as easy as possible to understand so that not only do the residents know what they can expect, officials know what staff is going to approve and understand, and the developers have some expectations when they come in. So we created a draft zoning code. The sections that you probably can't read up there are an introduction, which has a map that I'll show you in just a second, a series of new districts, taking the B1 and creating a B1A, B, C, and D to plug into the area. We've consolidated uses and created a little bit easier to understand use table. And then we created a series of building types. We provided some parking recommendations. There's also landscape and signage in the draft code, which I think you all have a copy of. I'm not really going to talk about landscape and signage tonight to try to speed this up a little bit more. But just to kind of dive in, we typically do a building type form-based code just because it's a little bit easier to understand on the ground. We highly illustrate it, and we create all of the information in as many tables as we can, just to make it easier for everybody to kind of at a glance understand what the expectations are. So we defined a series of six building types that we recommend occur within the downtown area. The first building type is this, it's the Main Street Building. And you can see some images. And really, I think Richmond Station was meant to be a Main Street Building with ground floor storefronts and upper floor either residences or office. And I'm showing you an image here. This is actually from Hensdell's Downtown, but everybody loves it because of the tulips, I think. But this is really the defined building for your downtown. This is really what you guys have up and down Burlington, and then up and down Cass, especially from Burlington to Norfolk, pretty much to Norfolk. And then you also have some just here to the east of the city hall that's pretty much intact along Quincy. The second building that we're recommending is a cottage commercial. And this is really, it started out being a type of building that would be, would be existing residents that's converted. But now, more and more, as you can see from these two images, people are building new cottage commercial buildings. And this is the kind of buildings that you're starting to see as you proceed north on Cass, especially north of Irving. They have a little bit more space around them. They tend to be smaller in scale. They tend to have pitched roofs. They might have a little bit less transparency, not so storefronty on the ground floor. And they also might have a couple of steps up or a ramp up to the ground floor. So they have a little bit different character, which I think is appropriate as you're kind of getting outside the downtown or in the edges. of getting outside the downtown, or, or in the edges. The General Stoop Building is typically an office-type building, or an apartment kind of building. It might have a raised ground floor, it has less transparency, typically has windows that are the same in the upper floors as the ground floors, and it might have a little bit more open space as well. So this is what we would recommend for the apartments in the R5, or up and down Quincy, or on the edges of Burlington. And then, the Rowe Building is a townhouse building, kind of like Quincy Street Station. There's a wide variety of things that could happen, but they tend to have entrances spaced regularly, the units are vertical, and so they don't tend to be as tall as what you can get with an apartment building. And they also tend to have a little bit more green space around them, open space as well. And so, those are the building types that we defined. And what you currently have in your existing code is this table of bulk and development standards, which has minimum lot area, minimum lot width, maximum floor area ratio, and then yards, as well as heights. It's a pretty simple table, not a lot of standards for form, and, and the difference with a form-based code is that, as you can see in your document, we have quite a few more form requirements. It's adding some of the design standards into the code, the ones that are easily understood, the ones that everybody would normally expect. And so the way that the code is laid out, each building type has, as you can see on the left, a whole series of requirements in a table, and then on the right, a series of drawings that are illustrating that, and then they're keyed together. So all of the, essentially, bulk requirements or form requirements are shown in this form as, as building types. So for your area, this is, these are the limits that we looked at. We defined B1A district as this kind of core area right around the station. So you can see this sort of makes a little cross at the intersection there at the rail and Cass Avenue, the dark purple. A B1B district, which is the area south of the purple, along Cass, and then a B1C district, which is the area north. This is going, this is showing it going from Irving north. What we expect to do is to, you know, work with you all about where you think that those limits should be drawn. But really, at this point, and with these economic times, the B1C is the most flexible of the B1 districts, and so you may want to allow that to continue to happen north of Irving. And that would allow office, it would allow more of a mix of building types, would probably match a little bit clearer what's happening on your ground, on the ground right now. So, and then there's what we call the R7 district, which would be a new residential district, which is the orange, up and down the train line. So four new districts to replace your B1, and then to create the R7, which would replace your existing R5 in this location, only wouldn't fully replace it because you've got it in other locations. And then the way that these districts work is, each one of these districts has a mix of permitted building types, but then also a mix of uses. And so the difference is, and you can, you can't really see this, but this is actually in your existing, in your, copy of your code, on page seven, I don't know if you guys have that. But the Main Street Building is permitted in all the B1 districts, the B1A, B, and C. Cottage Commercial is permitted in B1B and C, not in A. So A is your true Main Street Building. We will look at the uses in just a second, but it's meant to kind of have a sort of fine-tuned set of uses permitted. And then B1B and B1C permit the cottage commercial. The General Stoop Building, which I showed you, that is apartments or office, is also permitted in B1C. So B1A at the core is just the Main Street Building. B1B, south of the core down Cass, would be Main Street Building and Cottage Commercial. And then B1C north, and right now it's drawn north of Irving, would allow for cottage commercial, Main Street, or your Stoop Building, which would allow for multifamily to go in, or office buildings. And then, R7, the, the residential, would permit the Rowe Building, as well as the General Stoop Building. We also have two more building types. One is called the Civic Building, and that is a building that is limited only to civic and institutional types of uses. So if, for some reason, you were to build another city hall, or a library, or something like that, in any one of the districts, it has, it's still, you know, built to a landscape area, it has a setback instead of a build-two zone, but it doesn't allow for parking in the front. And it does have some design requirements, but it's much more flexible than all of the other building types. And that would be permitted in any location, but only for those specific civic or institutional uses. So it would give you flexibility in terms of designing for your, for yourself. It also would apply to a church, or some other type of institutional building. And then we also have what, what we've called a patio lot, and there's a restaurant that has an outdoor seating area and a vacant space. And so these are just a set of design requirements for how they should continue the street wall with a fence, which they have. And it's really based on exactly what you have on Cass Avenue, it's on the west-hand side between Burlington and Irving. And so it allows for the use of a vacant parcel without, you know, them building a permanent building on it. And so, when you have those different districts, then we've created this use table, which you can see is in the middle and on the right-hand side, where we've taken your six-page use table with a lot, a lot of lists of, of uses, and consolidated them into categories. And you can see on the left-hand side of that left-hand, those two skinny columns, what we do is we define like a neighborhood retail and a general retail, and then we list a whole bunch of uses. So that when you look at the use table, you understand that general retail is permitted only in B1B and B1C. And then you can look and find out what the, the details are. So it's a little bit more at a glance what's permitted in the different locations. So just to be clear, the B1A is, permits residential, hotel, office in the upper stories, but on the ground floor, it only permits neighborhood retail and neighborhood service. So it's smaller-scale businesses that would be, be, you know, appropriate for your core. B1B permits all of that, but then also permits general service as a special use. And also, we've introduced a kind of a craftsman category of uses as well. It allows for office as a special use. And then the main difference between B1B and B1C is that office is just permitted, it's not a special use in B1C, so that area to the north. So what we're doing is we're kind of mixing the building types and the uses to create the zoning categories, very specifically defined for the geographic areas. Any questions? Then additionally, there's a set of design requirements that we've incorporated, and I know that Housey Levine is intent to, intends to create a set of design guidelines. These are design requirements, and so we have, over time, created these, they're, they started out as guidelines, and they were things that we could quantify enough to make them actual requirements. And so think of these as the kinds of things that you would be looking at when you're approving a PUD, or looking at when you're looking to see whether or not they've met the guidelines that you would pretty continuously be approving. And so we've just codified them for you. So it's very important that we look at those specifically. Building materials is one of the easiest ones to quantify, and these are regulations that have been used over and over, and been fine-tuned based on the kinds of buildings that you guys have, and the kinds of things that you've permitted in the past. So it's very important to look at those and make sure that they would be appropriate in any case in the future, because we intend to include them in the code as regulations, as opposed to guidelines. But again, we'd work with Housey Levine on that. And additionally, for parking, what we've done is created a series of parking credits that is probably what you've been considering when you've been allowing for reduced parking. It's a credit, credit about on-street parking, or to allow counting your public parking, or if somebody were to do a car share for a multifamily, they can count that towards their parking requirements, just ways to help you reduce the number of parking spaces that you would be requiring of any particular development, just simply because they're in this TOD area. And that actually is all that I have, a little more than I meant, but I'm assuming that you might have. And there's a lot more that I could have gone over as well. But, you know, if I can answer any questions? I see lots of.
It's a lot to digest.
It is. And it will probably take a couple of times for you all to kind of get your head around it, but.
One of the interesting balances that I see is making the code more easy to understand, easier to allow development, and, you know, Westmont's history has been staff is easy to work with, and, and the board is, and planning and zoning commission, developers like working here, but the code needs revisions to make it more easy to understand. On the same hand, you don't want to make it so open-ended, I mean, I know there's details, but, but so easy to build that projects are coming in that don't actually need board approval, for example, certain Section 8 housing. They might build the building to look very nice, but we have lots of affordable housing already in town, wouldn't want that downtown. So how do you keep a measure of control over what goes in? Or for example, John's Greasy Spoon Restaurant and Fan Sales wants to go in downtown, it's a permitted use. You know, how does this board keep that control?
I think that, but there's two, two ways that you can do that. One is to, typically what we recommend with this type of code is administrative approvals. And that is not something that we anticipated happening here, because, like you said, it's really easy to get approvals. Although I don't think that it's necessarily needed to do two sets of approvals that you currently do through, through the Village Board. And so I, I don't necessarily recommend going to just administrative approvals, simply because then you can see anything that comes before you. The second thing is to identify what are the aspects of those types of businesses, or those types of developments that you want to avoid? And can it be handled through, you know, quality of materials, for example? Or signage, or, you know, requiring certain, certain things that might avoid less expensive development that you don't want to see?
And I think the bigger problem, I think it's easier when there's new development, like a new building going in, and you've got design guidelines and all of that, but, you know, we've got existing buildings, someone's going to come into an existing space, and, you know, I, I think you can regulate against like fast-food-type restaurants in your downtown, because that's not the type of restaurants you're looking for. But is there still, are you still anticipating some sort of approval process, whether this board or administratively, that get to look at a business coming into an existing building and say, you know, that's not what we're looking for, even though they might technically fit into an approved use?
And that, that's a danger that you, yeah, you need to look at, what are the reasons behind it? And if fast food is an issue, then you incorporate requirements for no takeout, or you limit, you know, drive-throughs, which we have a design requirement in here for drive-throughs for, for where you might want them to, to go. But, you know, the idea is to quantify it such that, you know, it's much easier for everything to happen, and everybody has some expectations. You know, it is, I mean, it's, in a way, I mean, I hate to put it back on you, but it's sort of up to you to say what, what's comfortable for, for the Village to put into the code. And I'm not an attorney, I mean, I'm a designer, and I write zoning codes. So we rely on your expertise to say, you know, here's a line that we want to draw here. We can incorporate as much form regulation and as much specificity in terms of the use that you're comfortable with, but at that point, you need to make the decision on whether or not you want it to go before the board, or you want to make it easier for staff to approve it. Across the country, almost every place that I work wants to make it administratively approved. Usually, the concern is not about uses, usually the concern is about design. And so the, the answer there is to have staff members that are, you know, well-versed in design, or to have a talent architect to, to approve it, to get it out of their plan commission, you know, talking about design when the plan commissioners have no design background. But in terms of uses, most of the time, we regulate that in the actual code with, with specificity in terms of what's, what's permitted.
Questions from the board? Any? Oh, Shannon?
I just wanted to kind of wrap things up. This is obviously a lot of information. It's presented in a way that's very different from what we're used to thinking about zoning regulations, so it has a different feel to it. We would like, as the design guidelines that Leslie referred to, that Housey Levine is working on as part of our second phase of that contract work, continue to look at these two documents, and, and make sure, again, that they work well together. There are, you know, aspects, again, that, there are some very good positive benefits to moving our TIF and our comprehensive plan goals forward through the recommendations from Bar Associates, while at the same time, increasing the residential density and getting the built-in clientele downtown that we've been fighting for, for a number of years. So it's a work in progress, and we would like to bring it back to you at the committee level, to kind of delve into the nuts and bolts of most of it. I want to thank Tony and Leslie for their patience, as we've been going through these other very detailed, long-range planning processes, and working with us very well. So with that, unless there are any other questions, we will have a committee discussion about this very soon.
Great, great. Anybody from the public wish to comment? We have applause, I like that. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll really do 31 North Cass, sorry about that. 31 North Cassy Avenue, the Sweet and Savory Spot Board to consider an ordinance approving a request from Danielle Kernan of the Sweet and Savory Spot for a development permit for the operation of a bakery and bistro in the B1 Limited Business District. Welcome.
Hello. You just need to turn.
You'll turn.
Oh, oh, I ought to, oh. Sorry. I'm Danielle Kirin, I am the sweet part of this new venture, and.
I'm Dan Pollak, and I'm the savory end.
So we are sweet and savory. And just brief overview, our hours, we're just going to be, well, first off, we're a bakery/bistro, full bakery, we make everything in-house, everything from breads to the, the cliche cupcakes and everything else. I've been a dessert caterer with D Sweet Berries for two and a half years, so now we're collaborating. The only day we'll be closed is Monday, we'll be open 6:30, fresh baked goods every day. We'll have coffee, we're getting our coffee locally, and it's delicious. So we're trying some new things and supporting others in the process. Sundays are the shortest day, and we're going to do brunches. We're still working out some details on if we're going to actually have it set up, or if we're going to do more like a family-style brunch. We are in the process for evening, because we'll have a bistro, and go on to some, here's some pictures of some stuff that we've got going on. We work with a couple of companies, we do a lot with chocolate, chocolate-covered wine bottles are probably one of our best sellers, as well as our toffee. Cinnamon rolls, a lot of custom orders, you come with us with an idea, and we either do a sweet table, or we do a couple specialty cakes, gingerbread houses even, there's nothing that I haven't done. Brief overview of the bakery menu, we will have in-house ice cream, more like a flavor of the day. Breads, pies, strudels, we're very driven with our culture, so we'll have a couple of those items as well. The cake pops, brownies, just kind of everything for anyone. And then on the savory side, we will do.
Yeah, can you say?
Chocolate-covered wine bottles. Yeah, it's, it's a full bottle of wine.
They're cool.
And it's covered in chocolate, and you get to eat the chocolate, and right off the bottle, it peels off like bark, the way that I wrap it, and so you have your wine and your chocolate. We do about 10 different specialty flavors, anything from a smores, or turtle, or homemade toffee on it, or if you come with a custom, we do a lot of anniversary colors or anything like that. And you can either bring your wine and we dip it, or we'll be able to, to have wine as well.
So you will, you'll be seeking a liquor license then?
Yes, we've started the process, we're just doing beer and wine, it's just kind of a nice complement for dinner, for the bistro part. We like to do a lot of dinner pairings, and it's just a nice little compliment to it. I wouldn't call it a bar or anything, it's, it's more like a perk.
Lamb burgers?
This will be more like the bistro menu. Lunch is more carving board, soups, salads, everything made in-house, even the lunch meats, burgers. Dinner will be a little bit more, I don't know, not classier, because everything's affordable. Steak, short ribs, mac and cheese, comfort food with a nice little personal touch. Again, everything made in-house, we love to support, like even the farmer's market, if, if all goes well, whatever we can get that's fresh and locally grown, we're going to use that. Again, stuffed cabbage, going back to our cultural roots, kind of have our, our own little personal touches, so...
Yeah, glumki.
Sarmah, as we call it, but we'll have that too. And this is our signature sandwich, just to give you, this is the ultimate sweet and savory, French toast, peaches, shaved ham, and then a black pepper strawberry cheese bread, so kind of bringing us the two sides together.
Interesting.
So that, that's us, and we're looking forward to being a part of Westmont, even all of the cruise nights, you know, that's, we look at that as a positive thing to get people in town. We plan on joining the Chamber, I'm from Clarendon Hills, so we're already on the Clarendon Hills Chambers, that's where I started. So we're very community-based, we're very approachable.
Right.
And on Mondays, I'm hoping to do like cooking lessons, I work with the autism community very much so, so I want to do some fun decorating stuff for kids with autism is just a way to keep that as an option for family.
Yeah, it sounds unique, it's a lot of different facets to your business. I ask the same question of every downtown business that comes, and that is, you know, we have the taste of Westmont, the street is closed for four days tonight, you heard that we may potentially be closing Cass Avenue for a number of weeks. You know, that could impact parking for your business, so, you know, I just want to be sure that you're okay with that. I like to get buy-in.
I mean, to me, it's, it's a couple days, and if...
Well, you can capitalize on it.
I'm hoping that people will just, you know, climb or walk or fly to us if they really want to get there, so...
Yeah.
We'll always have an open door, and if anyone is coming down to, to be a part of an event in, in town, then why not welcome them?
It's a good way to get business, actually.
Yeah, that's how we, we're open to anything, as well as we are relatively new to, obviously, the retail side of having a space, so I'm really not going to say no to much.
And you've talked to our Chamber already?
Yes, we know a couple of other members who have kind of led us that way too, and we're, we're on board.
Great. Any questions?
When do you plan on opening?
We're hoping for mid, mid-May, towards the end of May. I mean, we're, we're relatively new with, with this whole process, so we're doing our best to make sure everything's done properly, but the way things are going, that, that still is feasible.
Good.
But if it's not, we're not going to push it either, so we want things to be smooth and Health Department to...
Are you, you're in the building now?
Mm-hmm, yes. We're just cleaning, actually, and doing that kind of stuff.
Getting things ready the way you want it.
Yeah, and then we spoke with the Health Department, we can start bringing things in, and they have most of their paperwork, just waiting for a few more things, and so far it's been, and Westmont's been great.
Have you ever dealt with the DuPage Health Department?
I have. My stepfather owns a restaurant in Clarendon Hills, so I...
So he's gone through it.
He's kind of been our guiding light as well, and...
Good.
With getting my own sanitation licenses, as being a caterer before and using commercial kitchen space, I'm well aware, whatever, whatever they want is, is fine, so...
Good. Okay. Great. Any questions from the board? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Great, you'll be on for Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you.
Glad you picked Westmont.
Us, too. Thank you.
Amended real estate agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an amended real estate agreement for the sale of public property identified as PIN 0916406017.
So I emailed the amendment to you, you previously approved this agreement, and this change just affects the closing date, pushing it up a little, little faster. If you have any questions, let me know.
Great. Questions? No? Amendment to site development agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an amendment to the site development agreement for the outlet on 63rd Street to extend the date of certain property improvement obligations of the village.
And this was on the agenda of the last set of meetings, it was postponed, and the only change to the agreement which was emailed out to you today is simply to coordinate the, the dates in that amendment with the dates of the real estate contract that was on the agenda just before this.
Great. Okay. Declaration of village property as surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring certain vehicles/equipment as surplus property, village property to be sold at the DuPage Mayors and Managers, the MMC auction. Public Works Director, Mr. Stephen May.
There's no equipment, it's all vehicles this time. We, I don't have the announcement yet, I can't tell you the date, but it's typically in June, the Mayors and Managers holds their auction. So this is the list of equipment that we've, this vehicles that we've previously replaced, and they're ready to be sold.
Okay, and we've done this before with them.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Fiscal year budget 2013 slash 2014. Board to hear an update. Spencer Parker.
Our Finance Director, Spencer Parker, will give you a brief update, and we'll also be promoting the fact that we have our second workshop coming up this Saturday.
Right, so I have up here, I think I can zoom in somehow. Too far. So I have up here the list of our budget workshop dates. As you can see, we've gone through the first of four, proposed, our next one is scheduled for Saturday, April 13th, at nine o'clock here at the Village Hall, and we wanted to make sure we let all the public know about this and invite them to attend. As the boards are aware from attending previous workshops, and specifically this last one, we also want to make the public aware that the items we're presenting at these workshops are things that departments have worked hard to come up with, various ideas, they're, we believe they're viable solutions, none of them are ideas that the department heads are saying that they are specifically recommending and hoping that we move in that direction, but they've identified options. As the board's awareness has been discussed many times, this is going to be a difficult budget process with some difficult decisions, and we welcome the public's input and invite them to attend these budget meetings. And then on Monday night, after our second of the four budget workshops, we'll give a little bit more of a public update on the process and where we are at that point.
And I would just say again, you know, to our residents, this is your budget. This is not just the Village Board budget in the Village of Westmont, it's yours collectively, it's our residents' budget. So I would encourage people to come to the meeting, ask your questions, you know, we'd like to see people here, we had some on Thursday, so that was good, Thursday, whenever that was, whatever day that was.
I think the other thing is too, is I would really like to see the trustee elects...
Yes.
Joining these budget meetings, I think it's something that they need to look at, instead of just walking in and hand, and being handed a budget and all of a sudden go, uh-oh.
Right, yeah, that's, that's a good point, it's also their budget.
Yes, it is.
I should mention that tomorrow, our IT Director has three appointments with the new trustees to come in, get their tablets, and try to get them set up to be able to access this information electronically.
Great.
So I think there's two in the morning, and then I think he has one in the afternoon.
Wonderful. Well, hopefully, they will be at the budget meeting. Did you have anything else, Spencer?
Thank you, that's it. If there's anything else, thank you.
Okay. Voluntary retirement separation agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving a voluntary retirement separation agreement.
This was put on the agenda as we have in years past, where, as part of the budgetary process, where we have looked at certain positions and determined that if, you know, there was a retirement in that particular department, that we would entertain the idea of, you know, a, a separation agreement, and that's what's before you this evening.
Okay, questions? I don't think there's anything else to come before the board, we do not have a request for executive session, so... A motion?
So moves, Scott.
Second, Nero.
Okay.
Before Rocco, I just want to apologize to Attorney Semenek, I never forget his birthday, and I did. I feel terrible.
Oh, no, don't quit.
No problem.
I do feel terrible.
Happy birthday, you'll still get your carrot cake.
Yes, you will. You'll probably get it Monday.
I think I got it a few months ago when we reviewed executive session minutes.
You always get one for your birthday, too. So we'll do it Monday night, okay?
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clevene.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sim.
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Good evening, see you Monday.